It on.
Yeah, I think you're good.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
There we go.
Thank you. I'd like to call the Merrimack School District SAU 26 School Board Meeting, December 11th, 2023, to order. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I would like to note that Chair Ken Martin is absent tonight. He's excused. He had an event at his school and because we had to change the date, he's not able to be here. And also, our student rep is not going to be present this evening. Okay, public participation. If you're a Merrimack resident and you would like to speak, if you could just give your name and your address, and if you're a student, just your name. Okay, seeing none. Now, we're going to do recognitions. We're going to start with All-State Jazz Festival Auditions and All-State Music Festival Auditions. The way this is going to work is the Superintendent of Schools and I will give out the awards or shake hands, and our school member, Hardy, is going to be reading the names. Everyone's going to come up and just go through the... And we ask you to hold your applause until we get to the end of each group.
And may I just say quickly, we have some rock stars here tonight, from the stage to the athletic fields and everywhere in between. And I want you to know how proud we are of all of you and how pleased we are to be able to give you these certificates.
And the board will be making comments after, too.
Does someone have the certificates? Or am I just reading this name off, the names off the list?
Do we have the certificates? Maybe in... Maybe in Ken Martin's.
Here they are.
Right here.
Here we go.
There we go.
Now, we're in business. I got, I'll read them right off of here so that they're in order. Sound good? Okay. I'll pass them down when I'm done. So, we are going to start with the New Hampshire Jazz All-State Festival Auditions. I'm going to read the names for all of these, and then we'll honor them, and then we'll move on to the next group. So, please hold your applause to the end. We will start with Trey Grant for Honors Jazz Band and Lead Trumpet. I know, it's so hard, right? You could, you could do jazz hands. Yes, I said that. Julia Hodson, Honors Jazz Choir, Soprano Voice. Hikari McDowell, Honors Jazz Band, First Alto Saxophone and Tenor Saxophone. Adalina Camerlin, Jazz Choir, Alto Voice. Shaylen Sarsia, Jazz Choir, Soprano. And Rachel Yasivich, Jazz Choir, Soprano Voice. That is all of those. All right. So, we're going to move on to the New Hampshire All-State Music Festival Auditions, and we are going to start with Jenny Epstein, who is Concert Band, Alto Saxophone. Next is Vivian Halverson, Concert Band, Clarinet. Katie Anamoradi, Concert Band, Snare Drum. Sam Martin, Concert Band, French Horn. Hikari McDowell, again, Concert Band, Tenor Saxophone, Top Score. Dave Sharma, Concert Band, Baritone Saxophone, Top Score. Trey Grant, again, Orchestra, Trumpet. Chase Rowe, Orchestra, Timpani, Top Score in All Three Percussions. Owen Sabans, Orchestra, Bassoon, Top Score. Ella Guzman, Treble Choir, Soprano Voice. Susan Ridgey, Treble Choir, Soprano Voice. I wonder if a lot of these people could have been here last week, and they can't be here this week, I'm sorry about that. Shaylen Sarsia, Treble Choir, Soprano Voice. Adalina Camerlin, again, Mixed Choir, Alto Voice. Emmy Hartwell, Mixed Choir, Alto Voice. Julie Hodgson, again, Mixed Choir, Soprano Voice. Erin Murray, Mixed Choir, Alto Voice. Ben Pittman, Mixed Choir, Bass Voice. Colin Plum, Mixed Choir, Tenor Voice. Tristan Plum, Mixed Choir, Tenor Voice. Simon Yasivich, Mixed Choir, Tenor Voice. And we have certificates for their fearless leaders Vocal Teacher Ronald Beck and Instrumental Teacher Brendan McWalter. Now, we can wildly applause.
I'm just going to open it up for the board, just to say congratulations.
I want to say congratulations to everyone who we just gave certificates to. As a musician, I know how incredibly difficult it is to practice when you don't feel like it, to stay on task when you want to play what you feel like playing, and to be committed to your instrument, whether that be your voice or a musical instrument, to make it to the level that you have. So, congratulations.
Well, I just want to say I'm glad to be here because these are some of my favorite kids in, in the world, in this room tonight. So, and I've had the pleasure of directing a few of them into musicals, and they really can sing, and they're kind of amazing. I also can remember, and they're not here tonight, but Katie Anamoradi playing the drums for the first time in fourth grade at one of the concerts. And I remember thinking, wow, that, she's going to go far. And here we are, all these years later, right? So, I was, I was just really thrilled to be able to be the one to read your names tonight. Proud of you all.
So, yes, and congratulations to our all-state musicians. We hope that these musical experiences, you'll cherish them for life. All of you are exceptional. We had four that received very high honor scores, and everyone had great scores. So, great job, everyone. We're very proud of your musical talents and what you do for our community. And now, we're going to move on to soccer.
To soccer.
I'm going to hand these to our Chief Executive Officer, and I will read your names in alphabetical order, so you may hear your name, come on up, get your certificate. Gabriella Bulecki. Lauren Brodsky. Lila Carles. Madeline Columbus. Anna Davidson. Sophia Dubuque. Jetta Haslam. Honor Helminen. Haley Holbrook. Juliana Jimenez. Cassandra Jimeno. Andre Kovacs. Elise Lipinski. Alexandria Martin. Emily Pelletier. Avery Rigoli. Riley Taylor. Haley Trainer. And our coaches, Brian Holbrook. And Alberto Jimeno. Let's give a round of applause for our tri-county league Division One Girls Soccer Champions.
Well, I'll start, since everybody, they're making their way back. So proud of you all. Soccer is my favorite sport, so I'm very excited to see that you all made it. And having a soccer player that lives in my house, I know that that is a very huge accomplishment and all the hard work and dedication and hours of training and teamwork that goes into that. So, congratulations. You should be very proud of yourselves.
And I, too, love soccer. I played it, my kids all played it. Congratulations. I know how much hard work it is, how much stamina and endurance it takes, along with skill. So, congratulations.
And finally, so congratulations to the girls soccer team for winning the tri-county Division One Soccer Championship. This is an amazing achievement for you and your coaches and our community. The board wishes you the best as you continue to play hard and you have the courage to continue to win on and off the field. And as a side note, I'm so excited for you to bring that talent to the high school because 25 years ago, I coached the 1998 girls soccer team to a championship, and it's been 25 years since we won a championship. So, when I saw that you won, I was so thrilled to see that we are going to have this opportunity again in Merrimack. So, congratulations. And now, we're moving on to the Girls Cross Country Championship.
So, I am going to read the names. So, we're honoring, ready? We're honoring Zoe Kohler, who made Merrimack Middle School history with this achievement. She's the Middle School Division One Girls Cross Country Champion. And then, her coaches, Susan Heimberg and Jill Smith.
Okay, board. I was just going to say, congratulations. That's a lot of hard work, and I, for one, hate running, so I am super impressed for, I mean, personally hate to run. I don't hate running as a sport, let me clarify. So, I have huge admiration for anyone who can run long and fast, so well, well done.
And I just want to say, you know, cross country, there's no halftime, there's no pep talks, there's no substitute, it's just pure grit and pure desire. So, congratulations on all that you've done and for winning that special award, being number one in the state of New Hampshire. So, congratulations. And so, at this point in time, you guys can stay and watch the rest of the school board meeting, or you can go home and do homework. So, it's up to you. It's, it's really exciting if you stay. But we won't take it personally if you leave.
Sure.
Rich. Mr. Z.
Great night.
So, I don't think people will be doing public comment at the end, but we don't know. So, moving on to informational updates, we're going to start with the superintendent update.
Oops, thank you. We want to wish those of our colleagues and community members who celebrate Hanukkah a very happy Hanukkah, and it's never too early also to wish those who celebrate Christmas a very Merry Christmas and Kwanzaa, Happy Kwanzaa, since this, I think, is the last regularly scheduled meeting before the holidays. We have been very active in strategic plan meetings. We had one last week, there was another one this week, this Wednesday evening. Tomorrow evening, we will be meeting also with the Budget Committee. Our first meeting, we will be providing a, just sort of a summary overview. And I want to congratulate Ricardo Caraballo, who is a student at J-Muse. J-Muse is an anti-bullying campaign. And I'm going to pass this around. This young man, Ricardo Caraballo, had the winning piece of artwork in terms of anti-bullying, and I'll pass this over to you. It's a very impressive piece of artwork, and so, we congratulate him. And I'm going to keep it relatively brief tonight because we've got a lot, lot to discuss in tonight's meeting.
Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
I know that the room is clear, but it was just wonderful to have all of those different people here tonight. I know that the musicians and the soccer team and cross country, just a lot to celebrate. It was just nice to have everyone here. So, as Bill mentioned, this is our regularly, last regularly scheduled school board meeting. So, I just wanted to mention to the families out there that next Friday, December 22nd, is a two-hour early release. So, that is the day before the holiday break. So, I just wanted to remind parents that students will be coming home two hours early. And during this time, staff will be completing training on the identification, intervention, and mandatory reporting of child abuse, and how we can support students that are experiencing homelessness.
Comments? Okay. The Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Excuse me. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'm kind of battling that cold that will never go away right now, so excuse my voice, especially those who I had to call at like 6:30 in the morning for the Thorntons Ferry power outage. I know I didn't sound as chipper as I usually do, but I'm going to promise to you, I'm going to make it up next time, you know? So, anyway, the power's back on in Thorntons Ferry. Couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting with the School District Planning and Building Committee, and we presented the capital improvement plan to them. It'll be coming towards the board's table shortly, whenever we get another regularly scheduled meeting that's not budget-related, that we can go over. You'll see a few items that are going to be in the budget in the CIP, and then perhaps a potential one item that's in the, the CIP for a roof at J-Muse, which will probably be a warrant article, it's not in the operating budget. So, just to give you an update on that, the CIP was approved as presented by the School District Planning and Building Committee. Thank you very much.
Comments from the board? Okay. School Board update. So, everyone just received their new tax bill in the town of Merrimack, and we all had a pretty substantial increase. And while the board believes it's important for our community to understand how this came about, and a large part of this increase is due to the fact that certain segments of the commercial industrial properties in the town have decreased in value, while the residential property taxes continue to climb. And so, it's caused a larger percentage of town and district budget to be paid by the residential citizens. The town has had a decrease in value of $75 million on the industrial commercial side. So, last year, we did pass the much-needed teachers' contract that brought our teachers from the bottom into the middle of the state of New Hampshire. As we know, New Hampshire is facing a critical shortage of teachers in many disciplines, and the school board's understanding it's important for us to hire and maintain quality educators. And for our top, our property values to stay high, we need to keep a high-quality education system in the town of Merrimack. New Hampshire schools consistently are nationally ranked among some of the best in the country, and we want to maintain that. And just recently, the DOE released the 19 schools that were in most need of improvement. And I'm proud to say that not one Merrimack school was on that list. And our school district is striving for excellence, a rigorous curriculum, our district resources are focused, and we want to make sure all students are successful in learning at high levels. So, lastly, we all are feeling the inflation and the pressures. I know Matt's feeling it at the school level because there's increases in energy and fuel costs. We're going to talk about health insurance costs tonight. And so, it is a concern. If anyone watched our meetings last year, you can be sure that the school board took the budget very seriously, and we had very deep discussions about our needs versus our wants. That's all for the school board. Any comments?
I do think there's, everyone in town that owns property was affected by the property taxes that came out that are due this month for the second half of the year. I think for some, it was a surprise to see that their home assessments actually increased pretty significantly. I knew mine, for my own home, even though I've done zero improvements, significantly increased. But this year was both the increase in the assessment plus the very important warrant articles and items we voted on last year. I also think we need to understand that that shift from commercial real estate having a very large share of the burden of the tax base being shifted to residential is a lot of what we're feeling right now, and that's a temporary situation. Same with the housing. We do five-year assessments here in Merrimack. Housing is not always going to be what it is now, and commercial isn't always going to be what it is now. So, we have to be prepared for these bumps in the road, but they're not always going to be there. That's the great thing about economics. Economics principles always are there, they're always true, and there's always rises and falls. But it doesn't change the commitment of this board to our goals and to our commitment to the families and the children of this district to provide an outstanding education. And that are, that are the moves, those are the moves that we've been making for the last two years.
Thank you, Lori. Okay. Moving on. We are going to old business, update on the proposed new central office building. And I requested that we keep talking about this because I want the public to know about our proposed new central office building. And the reason for this is that we have safety concerns, we have space needs, we have confidentiality concerns, and it's important that our administrative team has a functional building to be able to do the work that we're asking them to do. We have discussed this as a critical need. It went before the voters in 2013, and 10 years later, we're bringing it back up in, in a more critical sense. We have been asked as a board to take a formal vote, so we can support the building in a formal vote, so if someone wants to make a motion, so we can take a vote on accepting and supporting this, I would appreciate it.
I move that we acknowledge the need to build an adequate, safe, appropriately confidential space for our administrators to work, and that we direct our capable administrators to provide us with options for doing that before the next, so that it can be on the ballot come April.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jenna. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
4-0-0. And in the same vein, we need to, we also talked at our last meeting about forming an ad hoc committee to support the Planning and Building Committee. We currently have reached out, and we have eight citizens who are more than willing to step forward and help support this. But we've been asked again to take a formal vote, so if I could have a motion?
I'll make the motion for, to open up discussion, but I make a motion that we support the, an ad hoc committee to discuss and take information from stakeholders on the SAU building.
I will also second that. Okay, so, we're ready for?
So, can I say something about that first?
Sure.
Sure. I think it's important that the public understand, and if there's others who'd like to volunteer, we, we want to hear from them. But this is no different than our strategic planning committee that is working on, well, previously worked on the very important Portrait of Graduate, Portrait of Student, and now moving in the strategic planning process. These are volunteers, these are people, all stakeholders, community members, parents, grandparents, no kids in the district. Everyone that is a resident of Merrimack is invited. It's not an elected body, and it's not, it does not have power to vote anything in. This is about receiving information and giving information to stakeholders about the SAU building, because we believe that it's important to communicate and have transparency about why and what we're doing and what we think is important about this building, and it's not just a want but a need. So, I just wanted to clarify that to explain how this committee is functioning.
I just wanted to add that, you know, as I'm talking to people, and I sometimes mention that we're doing this project, they'll say, you know, "Oh, where is our SAU building?" And "I've never been in that building." And then, when I tell them where it is, they're like, "That's our SAU building?" How does, how is it big enough is always the first question. And so, this committee really is in existence to pull a bunch of representatives from various stakeholder groups together, make sure they have accurate, timely information that they can help disseminate to the voters, so the voters can make an educated decision about what it is that we need. Because sometimes we can look at this and we can say, "Well, it's not a school building," or "it's not a, you know, a curriculum," or "it's not a this or a that," and, and people can write it off as not a need. But what we want to help our town understand and our community and all our stakeholders understand is it is a need, and if you know where the building is, and if you've ever been in the building, it's a, it's like a flashing red, like green, red light need, like high-level need. And so, all we want to do is to make sure we are creating every vehicle possible to educate the community in the spirit of transparency. So, that is what that committee is for, and certainly, anyone that is interested should reach out, you know, to Ken or to, or to Bill.
Sure. Okay. So, do we need to take?
So, call the question?
Yes. All those in favor of this committee, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And then, and then finally, I want to ask the board if we have board volunteers who are willing to bring the forward, this project to the Town Planning Board. So the Town Planning Board can understand, again, our needs and ask questions and be advised of this project.
I would be happy to do that with.
Yeah, I would be happy to too. I just need to check my calendar.
Yes.
Okay. Make sure I'm available.
But I can reach out to the chairman of the Town Planning Committee and see when we can be on their agenda.
Thank you very much. I think that would be a really great step in the right direction. So thank you, everyone. Okay. And now we're moving on to new business. And we have a House resolution requesting a more robust climate education in New Hampshire. We have Representative Wendy Thomas here. If you could want to come up to the table or the microphone, either one, Wendy.
Hi there. Very, very excited to be here tonight. I'm Wendy Thomas and one of the state reps for, for Merrimack. I sit on the Science, Technology and Energy Committee. And I'm also a member of Merrimack's fledgling Energy Committee that we've started, independent of the Town Council. Very exciting. Tonight, I'm here with four members of young advocates from, activists and advocates from 350 New Hampshire. Now, these, these young people, they, I should stop calling them, these people, they're not. Anybody that's younger than fifty is, is a kid. Anyway, they approached me this, 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 this summer. And they wanted to put a bill in to mandate a more robust climate change curriculum in public school. Well, if you've got, if you've been paying any attention to what's going on in Concord these days, now is the not, is not the time to do any kind of a mandate for public schools. It's just, it's just the wrong time. So we put our heads together and we decided that we would take these ideas, put them in a House resolution. Now, a House resolution is an official document from one governing body to another. So this would be a, an official document from the House of Representatives in New Hampshire to Frank Edelblut, in the Director of Education, the Commissioner of Education, not Director. And in this House resolution, which you have a copy of, they have outlined how they want to make climate change, the climate change curriculum more robust. We do have a climate change curriculum in New Hampshire, but it's, it's a little outdated. And, and I'm not going to take away their, their fire because they've got a great presentation to show you. One of the things, though, that, that they are focusing on is renewables, which, because of the Science, Technology and Energy Committee, I'm very excited about. So I'd like to introduce them. First of all, we have Dante. Raise your hand. Dante is a senior at Nashua High School South. He is the student representative for Nashua South on the Nashua Energy and Environment Committee, as well as the Nashua Board of Education. Additionally, he is one of the leaders of Planet Earth Club at South and is also a member of 350 NH Youth Team as a Facilitation Action Lead. Taylor? That's Taylor. Taylor is currently a senior at Nashua High School North. She is involved with the Green Club there as a student representative for her school on the Nashua Energy and Environment Committee. She also plays an active role in the 350 Youth Team as a Facilitation Action Lead. Next, we have Sonia. Sonia is a senior at Nashua High School North and a recruitment lead on the 350 NH Youth Team. She also works for Grow Nashua, an organization that advocates for food access and sustainability in the Nashua community. Finally, we have Elizabeth. And Elizabeth is the youth organizer with 350 New Hampshire and lives in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. She was a high school and middle school teacher for six years before working with New Hampshire High Schools on environmental projects. She has a master's degree from the University of Denver in Energy and Environmental Policy. So how are we going to, you're going to start off? Okay. Whoever's going to speak, though, you need to come up and, oh, there's a mic there. Okay, so what you have to do is turn it off. Okay, so whoever's speaking, just put that.
All right. Well, thank you, and we're definitely glad to be here. Thank you, Wendy Thomas, for the intro. And so, yeah, we'll just get started. We're going to keep it relatively quick, but we could open it up to questions if anyone's interested. So, yeah, Dante, as we said.
Taylor and Sonia, sorry.
And then, yeah, so it's our presentations on climate literacy in Merrimack. This is the first board we're officially like talking to, or planning on talking to Nashua as well and just make our way around the state. So you might be wondering what exactly is climate literacy? And so basically, it's an understanding of your influence on climate and climate's influence on you and society. It's about understanding Earth's climate system and making sure one knows how to assess scientifically credible climate information and really like how it impacts them. And ensures that one communicates about climate change in a meaningful way. And it can also teach one how to make informed and responsible decisions regarding actions that can, can or may affect climate change or the climate in general. And it also addresses the social, political and scientific aspects of climate change. So really, climate literacy is just being aware of all the things that are happening within the climate and how you can impact them for the good or for the worse.
So now that you know about what climate literacy is, you're probably wondering why we're here today. And that's for numerous reasons. Number one is that climate literacy teaches students how to make eco-conscious decisions. One study at San Jose University in California was conducted on college students that took a year-long class on global climate change. Afterwards, their habits were analyzed and it was found that by taking the class, they changed their habits so that they prevented 2.86 tons of carbon dioxide from entering the atmosphere per year. And mind you, that's just per individual. As a class, they save hundreds of tons of CO2 from entering the atmosphere each year. And that just goes to show how powerful climate literacy is in preventing the climate crisis. Also, climate literacy creates hope with promising environmental movements and technology. And this reduces climate anxiety and fear among youth, which a nonpartisan CBS study found that sixty-two percent of youth have climate anxiety and sixty-seven percent have climate fear. So by teaching about climate literacy in schools, you'll help to address this and help benefit students' mental health. Also, climate literacy informs students of the disproportionate effects that climate, the climate crisis has on marginalized community and gives, provides them with the tools necessary to address this. Finally, it teaches students about clean energy and provides examples of jobs in the field like Elizabeth. And this prepares students to enter the growing renewable energy workforce. Oh, there's a quote above you that says, in the US, more than eighty-six percent of teachers and eighty-four percent of parents support climate change education in schools. And this was from a bipartisan NPR study. And this just goes to show how if you implement climate literacy in Merrimack, it'd be well-received. Really, the only reason why it's not being implemented in a lot of school districts across the country is that teachers feel as though they don't have the resources and training necessary to do so. But by partnering with us and other organizations that create this curriculum, we will provide you with those resources and training so that teachers can start to teach about the climate crisis, which is something they would like to do.
All right, so what do we imagine happening so that Merrimack can provide climate literacy to all of its students? So our path forward is to connect school districts with resources and curriculum that effectively addresses all components of climate literacy. And that will also include providing climate literacy professional development for teachers, pursuing grants and funding specifically for climate literacy and ensuring districts have access to the different applications and resources so they can get that money. Something really important as school districts move towards this is really connecting the well-established network of environmental education organizations across the state who can offer their full support. We've been talking to New Hampshire Energy Education Project, New Hampshire Environmental Educators, as well as Shelburne Farms, Vermont Environmental Energy Project. So many different places across the state have all of these resources that students need to become climate literate. And school, school districts such as Merrimack can coordinate distribution of these resources and require that students are receiving the climate literacy education they deserve.
And by teaching climate literacy in schools, you'll prepare the next generation of leaders to succeed in a world where the climate crisis is increasing, increasingly impacting everyday life.
So, yeah, thank you all for listening and definitely be open to answering any questions or concerns you guys may have.
And I, I just wanted to say that I am so proud of this group. And, and they've done such a good job researching and putting their facts together. And they understand that this, this effort gets the conversation started. It may not affect change right away, but sometimes it takes a couple of, of times to, to propose an idea before it takes root. But they're, I'm just so impressed with this group.
Okay. Comments from the board?
Well, I, I just want to say I'm also extremely impressed. I mean, I have a high school senior, right? And I'm sitting here thinking, you, the presentation you guys just made was very impressive. I love that you knew what you were talking about. You read pieces of it off of here, but you really were talking out of something that clearly you're passionate about. You've put a lot of time, effort and energy into learning. And I don't know what the future holds for you, but wherever you go next, they're going to be extremely blessed to have you because you three are rock stars. And I guess it's okay for us to say that, even though they're not from Merrimack, right?
Thank you.
So thank you for coming. I, this is not something I would say I know necessarily a ton about or have a lot of background in. And I actually learned some things through your presentation. So thank you for taking the time to come and help us learn about it.
I would say that I appreciate that you are passionate about this topic and that you are willing to take action on it. I do support the legislative process at our state in Concord and how that would work. I do, I have looked at your website before tonight. And I would encourage you, as it moves forward in the House and if, in the Senate and is signed, that you work with competing organizations, that it, that truly everybody needs to be at the table, not just one viewpoint. And that's how good curriculum is developed, is when you have all sides and pros and cons, strengths and weaknesses of, of everyone around the table. And then you have really good curriculum for students to learn from.
And so finally, I just want to say thank you for coming tonight. Also, your presentation was exceptional. As a board, for us to make curriculum change, we would need to work with our, our Assistant Director of Curriculum. But we could, we, we have a goals meeting in June where we talk about the importance of what our goals are for the year. And we certainly can add this to our goals meeting to have a deeper discussion.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Thank you for coming tonight. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. So I'm interested in hearing, as I read through the proclamation, do you see this as a standalone course or being incorporated into one of the core requirements already as, as seniors, juniors, sophomores? Are you?
We're all seniors.
You're all seniors. So you've taken the physical science requirement, the life science requirement. Where do you see it? Is it going to be a standalone course or incorporated into those core requirements?
I think this is a conversation that might be different for each district. I think it has a lot of potential as a standalone course, but also that the current climate units that I've had in my biology classes haven't been sufficient. I don't know. What are your thoughts? We've, this is something, again, that we're going to have to be flexible with for districts.
Yeah, just to add to that, I know like a lot of districts already have like an environmental science class, for example. Not necessarily AP, but just, or it could just be a standalone environmental science class. So one option could be even like making that a required class. But that's just one avenue. There's different ways.
Going off of what Sonia said, in biology, we do cover climate change. But I feel as though a lot of teachers tend to brush over that unit. If you require teachers to teach about climate change more, that would be a great avenue to explore. Also, in Nashua, we just got rid of physical science as a required class. So we're thinking that rather than have physical science required, we could have environmental science required as well.
Thank you.
You know what? May I just say it's, thank you for an excellent presentation. This is a very interesting discussion about change process, not only in our country, but, but the world. There's, there's new information, new industrial processes, new innovation develops, not only domestically but internationally. There is a wealth of information that we can draw upon from you. Regrettably, climate has become highly politicized, as you know. And it's, I think one of, one of our jobs is to de-politicize it as much as possible and, and provide our students with, with factual information, which is what you're all about. May I ask, do you, do you connect with other similar groups around New England and around the country?
Yeah, I think that our, they can speak to some of the partners that they've talked to explicitly. But we do also work with a number of different organizations across New Hampshire, some of those being Sierra Club, New Hampshire Youth Movement, League of Conservation Voters, and a few other organizations that work explicitly on climate policy. But we also regularly engage with the State House and doing testimony and talking with people who might not have the exact same opinions as us as well. And so a lot of our work is also just engaging with community stakeholders on this. So I think that we have like the equal parts of partnering with organizations that are working on very similar topics to this and might have access to things like curriculum development, especially why we are spending a lot of time talking with educators and school boards. But we also do things like canvassing and just like talking to generally community members about what their thoughts are on climate education, things that they would like to see from that curriculum as well and how that would work in legislation. I don't know if that helps answer that question, but, yeah.
We're just sort of one facet of this movement here. We're working with so many different organizations with the same aim is to get environmental education in schools. We're talking to UNH New Hampshire Environmental Educators, so Granite Outdoor Alliance. Yeah, this is, we're really hoping it's going to be a statewide thing. And also a key word we're trying to use is climate literacy rather than climate change education. And I'll let Taylor explain a little bit more about what that means.
Yeah, so what Dante touched upon in his slide about what climate literacy is, we talked about how it addresses all aspects of the climate crisis, not just limited to the scientific aspects, but the socioeconomic ones as well. So by working with these organizations, we'll be able to address those socionomic aspects of the climate crisis. And we'll also be able to address some of the localized effects of the climate. aspects of the climate crisis. And we'll also be able to address some of the localized effects of the climate crisis on New Hampshire, such as lack of snow, which is hurting the ski economy up north and maple syrup production and stuff like that. But we'll also talk about some of the national effects as well.
Must say you're very impressive.
You really are. It was definitely a no-brainer to accept working with these guys. They're they're just so devoted. And I want you guys who, not that you're not, you're not older, but you're not Gen Z. These guys are Gen Z. Gen Z is is rising. And they want a seat at the table and they want to be heard. You know, so that's, that's what we're doing. Letting them be heard. So thank you very, very much. I don't know if there's any other questions.
Thank you. Very much.
Okay, so we're moving on to policies. Oh, no, sorry. We are now with Matt.
I just, I just skipped half the agenda. I was like, well, we're ahead of ourselves. It's Matt, because we don't really want to talk about this. Maximum rate for health insurance, Matt.
Yeah, the guaranteed maximum rate increase or sometimes decrease is it has been in the past twenty years, a couple of times. Has, is usually given to us around the time when we start doing our budget, so we can build a budget incorporating this percentage in into the budget for, you know, our purposes. And and then in the spring, too bad it doesn't come around deliberative session time or something like that, but it does come after deliberative session. You get your actual rate. So the two can vary. Sometimes they vary, you know, considerably and sometimes they haven't. This year, the GMR guaranteed maximum rate is fifteen point nine percent. You would think that recently, last year was, or this year's eight percent. The year before, FY twenty-three was minus two point three percent. Which I knew when I saw the minus two point three, I says, okay, let's wait, see what's gonna happen next year, because that was a no-brainer on my part bracing for that impact. But then it was five point two, and the five years average is around six point six when you just average it. But averages, they don't do anything for budgets that are already passed and in the book and everything like that. You know, you're looking at the the year-to-year increase. We're around eighty-three percent, eighty-four percent credible, meaning that we own all our own claims. And we belong to the pool of other schools, districts across the New Hampshire, state of New Hampshire to kind of insulate us against peaks and valleys. But we still get peaks and valleys because they're around eighty, eighty-three percent credible. If we had a thousand employees, we'd be a hundred percent credible. Also, the medical trend out there was around thirteen point nine percent. Which means all the claims as far as prescriptions and doctors' visits and operations and medical care just, you know, statewide have been around fourteen percent. So you start off at fourteen percent and there's nowhere to go up from there. Fortunately for us, we didn't go up too much from that, that point on forward. There was an increase in prescription drug costs and usage. And a lot of this kind of bounced back from the pandemic when no one could go to a doctor, even if, you know, you had something that was kind of seriously wrong with you. You were kind of discouraged from even going in there, or you felt you didn't feel really safe going to a hospital where you could walk out with COVID. And here we are, you know, in this day and age, and everybody's got the flu in our office. So I don't know what's worse. But anyway, regardless, it's fifteen point nine. We didn't budget for the full number in the the operating budget, because with with staff turnover, you know, you're never sure how many single, two-person and family plans you're gonna get. You know, this year, we could have had a lot of single plans. We could have budgeted for a lot of two-person and families, but I've seen over the course of a couple of years, those single plans turn into two-person plans, and then they turn into family plans. And I've seen it go the other way, too. So it's kind of an art form trying to figure out what's going on. So we didn't take the whole sixteen percent. But that's what it is right now. It's fifteen point nine percent. And we'll be talking about that amongst other things in budget season. So, thank you very much.
Comments from the board? Okay. Next up is going to be talking about the deliberative session dates, and that will be Bill.
Well, the deliberative session will take place somewhere between March second and March ninth. And I understand from a historical perspective correctly that you your your task to select a deliberative session date somewhere in that range.
Comments from the board?
Well, our regularly scheduled board meeting would be on the fourth of that week. So we can either make it our board meeting, which I think we've done in the past. Or we can make it Tuesday, the fifth, I think.
Matters of a day that in the
Well, we have, we have made it a regular board meeting, and you're gonna have a regular board meeting after the deliberative session if anything changes anyway. So that would be a nice date to do. And then you could pick a date for a snow day. Perhaps it's a Wednesday, perhaps it's a Thursday. You definitely want to stay away from the weekends, because both Bill and I have been down that road. We've had, we've had town meetings or whatever on a Saturday, and it's like, oh, my gosh, you know, that's not good. No, hardly any people show up to that because they're out busy doing stuff, you know, so. The Monday or Tuesday, whatever. But Monday feels like a nice day to me. I don't know how Bill feels about that.
I agree. I think since it's on the same date as one of our regularly scheduled meetings, it makes a lot of sense.
And there's not gonna be like, the town planning meeting is not gonna be that night. There's, you know, we've kind of cleared the schedule for those first Monday nights. So I think we have, you know, more opportunity for the town to come without competing town business going on.
I was just gonna ask if we know when the town deliberative session is gonna be.
It'll, it'll be by, they have their own charter, so they don't have to go by the, bless you. They don't, don't, don't get your germs on me. The town has their own charter. So if you look at the, if you look at the SB two timeline for April meetings, and then you back off, it tells you where the deliberative session is. They go the week after us. So usually Paul is asking me, when's your deliberative session? When's your snow date? So they can make sure that they lock in the second week, because they're gonna do that anyway. So.
I make a motion that we do the deliberative session on the fourth and our snow day the seventh.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
There we go. Now we're gonna move forward to the overview of the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school district budget.
Well, it'll actually be the twenty-four, twenty-five. We're going to give you just a thousand-foot perspective on tonight. As you know, next week, we'll get into the budget discussions and presentations in earnest with the with the schools, and we will use successive weeks to talk about and discuss and deliberate. We've put a lot of work into this budget. A lot of people have put a lot of work into this budget. And let me see if I can get this budget slide to advance. And, oh, there we go, okay. You know, in developing a school budget, I always like to refer to the quote of Dr. Thomas Armstrong, who is an internationally known consultant, education consultant, author. And you know, we talk about in our own families how if we have two or three or four children or more, how they all seem to be a little bit different. They all seem to have different likes, dislikes. Well, that's the intrigue of putting together the quantification of programs and services that we feel we need to responsibly educate our students in Merrimack. And so this quote, and I'm gonna mention this to the Budget Committee tomorrow night also, and that is a school district budget, according to Dr. Armstrong, represents the quantification of developing the means and the capacity to facilitate human development with respect for each student's particular style and rate of learning, as well as an appreciation for the varied interests, aspirations, capacities, obstacles, temperaments, and backgrounds that serve as a framework within each child. We're all different, which makes us all the same. But the intrigue is to try and make sure we understand the needs of every child in our school district and try to develop the programs and services that are necessary to meet those needs. We have a multi-step process, as you know. We've started back in October gathering data. The principals and other budget managers have developed site-based budgets. And so we're at step three right now. And we'll begin next week in earnest, presenting the initial budget proposals to you for your review and deliberation. You will approve ultimately a budget that will be passed on to the School Budget Committee. They will take action on the budget also, and then present it to the deliberative session, as we just noted, will be in March. See if I can advance this. There we go. One of the things that we have tried to do in in earnest, beginning a couple of years ago, is listen to people. You know, in my office, in my closet, I probably have three hundred books on how to improve education. I won't read one of them, but I will talk to everyone, along with Amy and Matt and others in the school district, to find out what are the strengths of our students, what are the needs of our students, and what do we need to do in terms of programs, services, both during the school day and after school, to make sure that they have the greatest opportunity possible to develop to their maximum potential. So we started back in the middle of October, and these are the dates that we met with the staff. And they have been very appreciative of our meeting with them, and we have been very appreciative of them taking their time after school to provide us with the input in terms of what they have observed of the students and what they feel as educators and top-quality educators are the needs of our district. Over the years, there are some variables that keep rising to the surface that are indicators of a quality school system. First and foremost is a highly qualified and trained, well-prepared staff. It's our job to be able to recruit them, hire them, but retain them also. That involves, and Laura, you mentioned it a few minutes ago, that involves competitive compensation. This is a labor market. It is no different than the private sector. We have a labor market that we are trying to staff for children, for the benefit of children. It is the most important labor market, I believe, in the country. We want a robust curriculum with rigorous instruction. Enter our Dynamic Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Amy, who has done an extraordinary job since she started here in terms of working directly with the staff, not from the top down, but working with the staff to make sure that we make the curriculum revisions that are necessary to present information that is current, that's relevant, and that is growth-oriented for our students. And they'll have her, and certainly Matt will chip in during this presentation also. We want to make sure we provide enough materials and supplies to allow our teachers to conduct rigorous instruction during the day. This is not a worksheet-oriented school district. No district should be a worksheet-oriented school district. It should be a aggregation of various supplies and materials, multi-sensory in nature, that stimulate and motivate students to learn. We need to make sure that since technology now, in the last thirty to thirty-five years, has become an integral part of the exchange of information, particularly in a school setting, we want to make sure that we have the adequate funding both in the operating budget and sometimes if necessary, in the capital plan budget, to make sure we have adequate infrastructure to support the number of devices that we have, that we have the hardware and the software to complement any programs that we are presenting to students. We will provide targeted professional development. That is our obligation to make sure that we help our staff grow and develop in their level of expertise. We want to make sure that we have a sufficient level of academic supports in place. I think one of the most important elements of any school district is early intervention services in reading and math. We are presently providing those services. We are beginning to grow them. Sometimes we have to make some difficult decisions in terms of do we forego them or delay them for a year for financial reasons. We'll discuss that through the, through the budget process, particularly when it comes to math intervention. This is the day and age also, where social and emotional supports are of increasing importance, as we all know. Children are coming to school, growing up in a much more complex society, much more pressure-packed society, with many stresses, many, many issues causing anxiety that we're seeing more and more in the early grade levels. We want to make sure, and with your support, we've significantly improved co-curricular programs in the school district over the last couple of years. We had a number of students in our principals and assistant principals, we'll discuss those with you. Those areas that beyond the school day allow students to pursue their passion, which is extraordinarily important. And they're working with a teacher who is passionate in those areas also that they participate in. There's been much, much research over the years in terms of reasonable class size and the significance of that on the academic achievement levels of students. Probably the most famous study was conducted by Lamar Alexander, who used to be the former U.S. Commissioner of Education. He was the governor of Tennessee at the time, the Tennessee Study. And there have been others that have, they've shown that reasonable class size on the lower side at the elementary level does have a positive association and correlation with academic achievement. It diminishes somewhat as students age in upper grade levels. But the importance of lower class sizes, reasonable class sizes at the early childhood and upper elementary level is extraordinarily important. As we mentioned already, we are dealing with a labor market. It is extraordinarily important to be able to provide competitive wages and benefits. We have lost some staff, prospective staff in the last year or two, because we weren't competitive. Last year, the town was good enough with your support and the Budget Committee's support to pass an article improving teacher salaries. That has made a huge difference to our school district. The quality of the staff members who have interviewed here over the last year since that has increased dramatically. And so thank you for that. We want to make sure that we can provide ancillary services such as transportation, which is extraordinarily important. You know, years ago, we used to have a lot of walkers. Walkers are a thing of the past. School bus transportation is the safest way for children to get to school and home from school. And we want to make sure that we, every year, have a, an appropriate capital improvement plan. You know, our facilities, we take great pride in this community, in facilities being very clean, very well-kept. I provide much of that credit to Matt. He's done an outstanding job. He's one of the most skilled people in the area of facilities and operations with whom I've ever had an opportunity to work with. So, you know, we focused on certain needs for the twenty-three, twenty-four. The current school year, I won't go through all of these. But some of the more important ones is to create an engaged, inclusive, collaborative district culture. Every, every successful organization or unsuccessful organization begins with the nature of its culture. What we've tried to do is be as participative as possible, let our staff know that their opinions are important. We are paying their salaries to educate the children in this district, and we better listen to them and understand what works and what doesn't work. So I won't go through each, each one of these, because I don't want to have the meeting go too late. But for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which is the budget we're talking about, we're gonna focus on, we're gonna focus on the Mesa Contract, the support staff. Those people are incredibly important every single day in the functioning of our school district. Some of them don't have direct contact with students, but everything they do has some benefit to a student or a staff member. We want to continue to have safe and secure facilities, hiring and retaining staff, and have a research-based literacy program. To the right are some of the administration budget priorities that you'll see and hear in the budget presentations of the administrators over the next several weeks. And Amy, if you don't mind, I'm going to turn it to you for the curriculum instruction assessment priorities.
Sure, I'm excited to talk about our next steps, moving from a balanced literacy approach to a structured literacy approach. We've spent the last year or so really focusing on the word recognition part of reading. So can students accurately identify the sound-symbol relationship, you know, what people might think of as phonics, you know, there's phonemic awareness and word recognition. But now we're going to be turning our attention to the knowledge-building part that we know students need to be skilled readers. And so this budget does bring forward the purchase of a core literacy program, which we don't currently have in Merrimack at all. We do have some resources that we've been using. Some folks might be familiar with Making Meaning, which is a tool that we've been using, but Witten Wisdom is what we are considering right now. We have some pilots happening at the upper elementary in grades five and six, and then some pockets of teachers that are looking at different modules to let us know if this is going to be the right fit for us here in Merrimack. It is aligned with the core phonics program that we purchased foundations and goes along with the Geodes, which are the decodable readers that kids use in K-1, 2 to really work on their reading fluency. So it is the same company that produces the Geodes, but it is just a remarkable knowledge-building approach. It looks not just at cortex-like novels, but it also looks at short stories, paintings, stories, videos. It has a lot of different media and text that's incorporated, so we're excited to think about how that can be incorporated here and really help us develop skilled readers K to 6. And then looking at what is happening at the middle school, there's always that, you know, period of time where you're looking at appropriate implementation of programming, so we'll be sure to include that in our future budgets as well. We have, we think we've had some really great response to iReady and using the My Learning Path, the individualized intervention or enrichment or individualized practice with iReady. There are funds in the budget requested to continue that use, as well as some additional PD for staff. We have had great response and great collaboration and partnership with Curriculum Associates. They're the folks that make iReady. They've been on-site. They'll be on-site again in January. They've been very responsive to our questions, but in the second year of the implementation, you continue to learn and learn new ways that you can use iReady to inform your instruction. This year, you know that we are using, we're administering the PSATs at sophomores, and I think we're also going to do freshmen. But next year, we have funds in the budget to do both freshmen and sophomores as our progress monitoring tool. Right now, we don't do any assessments really at the high school, and that was a gap for us because it's hard to know, you know, how is our instruction? What are the areas that we need to fill in? So we've looked at our SAT scores and then worked backwards from there. We are looking at a possible addition of a screening tool primarily for our tiered interventions. If you've been in education, you might be familiar with AmesWeb. AmesWeb is something that's been around for a long time, and we're just at the early stages of looking. We do have some pockets using it in special ed, and so we may be looking to use it in tier one, but also in our other tiered interventions. It is a very quick tool that teachers, interventionists can use to make sure that the group that they have in front of them that is responding to the intervention that they have. So that's, you know, we're not, you know, moving forward. We're in the early stages of determining if that tool is needed. There are budget, there are funds in the budget requested for high-quality professional development for all of our staff. We've tried, since I've come on board, to really differentiate what is offered depending on the role that we have. Paraprofessionals need a different type of support and professional development than teachers, and then even within that realm, you're looking at interventionist literacy, professional development, math, writing. What do our unified arts teachers need? What are our school counselors and SEL specialists need? So those, that type of high-quality professional development, you know, needs funding, so we're requesting that. And then you'll also see a request. We have a terrific mentoring program here in the Merrimack School District. It's called the Torchbearers Program. And when I came here, I've just been so impressed with that group. But to be honest, the compensation for the mentors specifically has not kept up. They are part of the SLP process, which I don't know how familiar you are, but there's one pot of money, and lots of people apply for those funds, and the mentors over the last couple of years are really getting less and less. And if you've ever been a mentor or been mentored by someone, you know that it is a tremendous amount of work to do it well. So we also, as Bill has mentioned, as we look to recruit teachers and have them stay, we know that mentoring is a research-based practice, and if you can get people connected within their community and they feel like they have support, they'll stay. So we are looking to be able to fairly compensate those folks that has not happened. It just, I don't think we've increased that in 20 years.
Oh, that's the 150 grand in the budget?
No, that's the mentoring.
Mentoring? No, we have not, no. But we've increased the number of mentors, and I can't tell you, what I hear from a lot of people when they're here is the mentoring program really helped them, made them feel more of a part of the building community right away. So it is exceedingly important to keep going and to maintain.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions for me? I think you're up, Matt, to talk about facilities.
Oh, sure. Oh, okay. So we're going to, we're going to continue our roofing program. This has been something that's been going on for a number of years, and in some years, we've taken a break from this for a couple of years, and it really hasn't served us well to do that. So we want to kind of continue on. Any roof that we put on a building right now, you are not going to hear me talk about replacing that roof because I will not be here. I'll be sleeping across the street in whatever that place is over there. So because they've got like 35-year warranties, 40-year warranties, it's amazing. So it's really good. It's supposed to manufacture an installation warranty. So it's going to be another roof at J Mews to kind of complete that segment, and then we'll come back in '25, '26 with another iteration. We do as much as we can during the summertime because it's tough when it drags into the school year. It's not optimal, so we do what we can do during the summertime, and we get it done. And we do get fairly good prices. We bid all this stuff out, and we've really gotten some good deals. We have a window replacements, around 32 windows at the upper elementary school need to be replaced. The aluminum frames or metal frames around them that are anodized, they've got some little holes in them, and they're, they need to be patched up, and they're a little bit less than optimal as far as their functionality goes. And then, yeah, building security. We're looking at cameras, lock sets. Hopefully, those are going to be coming out of a grant that I'm waiting to see if we get, but it's still going to be in there one way or another. And then another thing that's not down there, but Bill talked about it, it's the technology piece. Years ago, we used to, we used to put $200,000 towards technology and call it a day and feel good about ourselves. Well, that was not, that was not further from the truth. You know, so now, last year, we were kind of getting back to reality. I think we had around 1 million plus in the capital improvement plan or in the budget for technology, and around 1 million 2 this year for technology. Replacement of laptops, we're going to one-to-one. Every kid has a laptop or notebook, Chromebook, whatever the heck it is. You know, the teachers and the staff, what we expected them to do with technology is not what we expected them to do 20 years ago. So we have to make sure they get proper machines that'll do the work they need to do, and we need to take care of the added burden that this puts on our aging infrastructure because most of this was built a lot of years ago. And so we're replacing switches, replacing, you know, routers, we're replacing wiring in buildings now. You know, the buildings that I wired 18 years ago now have to all be redone, you know? So it's a massive undertaking once you take that step to say, hey, we're going to be, we're going to get into technology, and we're going to utilize this day in and day out, and it's going to become our normal because that's the way it is out in the world, you know? Everything runs off of technology. You don't, you don't, you don't know how to use the computer in front of you in an appropriate fashion, and you miss that in your high school education piece. You know, you're missing out a lot. You're limiting yourself as to what access you are going to have as far as career goals and college goals, too, you know? So we're investing heavily in that, so that's another big item that's in there, and it's going to be a recurring item. It's not, it's not anything that's going to go away. Once you commit to it, you're all in, and we've committed. So, thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Before I ask if you have any questions, I'd like the members of the community to understand that through your initiative a couple of years ago of goal-setting meetings, we have worked together to develop a clear sense of direction. Add on to that the conversations that we have had and very good conversations with our staff in the schools, and they have been very appreciative of it, and we have been appreciative of them participating. And now our strategic planning process, we have a clear sense of direction moving forward. This is not a school district where we bounce from one thing to another, you know, every successive year. We know what we need to do, how we need to do it, and we're sequencing as fiscally responsible as possible what we see as the need and what we see as what we're capable of doing. And not capable of doing everything, but we're bringing as much consistency to the district in what we do and how we do it and when we do it as possible, and that's extraordinarily important. So thank you for being so supportive and taking the lead in making sure we have that sense of direction. So we'll answer any questions that you have.
Comments or questions from the board?
So I have two questions. One is under district administration budget priorities. I see some positions, but something I don't see is something we've talked about is the possibility of hiring permanent subs at the high school. And I'm wondering if that would, if you would place that under that or place it on the high school side?
That would be more in the high school budget.
Okay.
That's something that in our budget meetings that begin next week, let's take a look at that.
Okay.
Flesh that out. We understand, bringing this budget to you, that you can make changes to this based on what you see, and sometimes your priorities may be different than ours, and that's, that's not a bad thing. You represent the voices of the community, the needs that the community has expressed to you, and so we are very respectful of that.
Thank you. My second question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt. Jason Pelletier shared with us last year kind of that rotation of things that he's going to do. He's, I don't fault you, Jason, if you're not listening, but it might be good if he could, if he's going to present to maybe reiterate that rotation and why this has to be a permanent item in the budget.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. It's going to be part of his presentation. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I just have a couple. You know, the board, I appreciate what you said because we have been very goal-focused, and we've also been very results-focused. And so when you start looking at our scores, one of the places that we have showed improvement in the last year is our graduation rates. We've gone from 84% to 87%. And so every step in the right direction, I think, is a good step for us. And the other place that we've had improvement is our turnover rate. So right now, 4.6 are first or second-year teachers. If you go back just a couple of years, that would be like 12% or 15%. So, and our only lowest score is we have a C minus in diversity, and I don't know how we prove that, you know? But I mean, everything else, we're a B, we're at the B range, we're on the honor roll, but we're going for high honors. But I just want to say, we're evidence-based, and as we work as a board, we trust the administration to come to us so we can get the results that we're looking for. And when we see the results, we want to share that with the public so they know we are moving forward, and we know it just by teachers and students, but when we start seeing real evidence, we want to put it out there.
I had one comment.
Okay.
Lori, I had one comment.
Sure.
I wanted to say that I appreciate the attention to upkeep of buildings because that has the potential, it's something that could easily be looked at, and people could say, oh, you know, that's a big outlay this year. We'll put it off, and we'll put it off, and we'll put it off. But if you do that, you end up with buildings that, it's just pushing the cost down the road, and it makes it cost more in the long run because by then you're, it would left with an emergency or a building that's not usable because so many things are wrong with it. And so I wanted to say that I appreciate the way that we're doing it in stages like with the roofs, where we're just doing a little bit every year so that it doesn't get to a point where all of a sudden we've got, you know, holes in our roofs. So thank you for that.
I could just.
That's a good point.
I could just kind of elaborate a little bit. It's kind of like if you're on the town side and you don't maintain your roads every year, you wind up in a situation where one town very close to us wound up in, they had to take out like a $15 million bond to do all the roads because they were just going to rack and ruin over the years for not doing anything about them. So, you know, you had to incur a lot of debt, a lot of long-term debt for deferred maintenance, pay the interest on it, and everything costs much more than it would have if you just taken care of it when you should have taken care of it. So I appreciate that statement. Thank you.
And may I just say also that the condition of a building is the first manifestation of a level of pride in any organization, particularly in a school district, and that pride is a demonstration of the passion and commitment of people. And we have some of the cleanest schools in the entire area.
And so that makes me want to say one more thing. And that's why, and that's why the central office is so important for the face of Merrimack education. It's so important that we build that building because of our pride.
Yeah, there are several people, especially new hires, did you see, you know? And they're kind of circling the building, kind of like they don't know where they are, and they have this glazed look on their faces. It says, are you coming for an interview? Yes, because I've got my brand-new suit, my brand-new tie and everything like that, that I just learned how to tie because I just got out of college, right? This is where you want to come for your first big job, right? They go, oh, that's really? I thought people lived there. And I said, well, at times, we feel like we do live there, right? So anyway.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to policy. This is the second review of the evaluation requirements for children with learning disabilities, I H B A A. Do we have discussion?
We have had, on all of the policies before you tonight, we have had no comments. Suggested revisions. If you recall, all of the red text is that that is either added or deleted by legal counsel that meets statutory requirements, and so the only thing I would ask is that of all of the policies, that we waive the first reading since of the admission of tuition and non-resident students because we always make a motion to waive the first reading so that we don't have to read through the entire text.
So I'll jump down to that item and make a motion to waive the first reading of revised admission of tuition and non-resident students.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I will say that hopefully, tonight, hopefully, we can pass the revised use of physical restraint and seclusion policy. This is the third visit of that policy, and I'm going to recommend that for approval tonight.
So let me speak to that one since there was additional information after the last time we discussed that one. When we went through our accreditation process up at my school, we received the technical advisory from the DOE to help us write that policy. I took that language directly from the technical DOE and talked to Sandy and conferred with Naomi to make sure that that was the language in there regarding the monitor, the co, or sorry, the co-regulator. And so you'll see that the language changed a little bit there, but it matches with the DOE recommends. It is part of the definitions, that's why it's there, and there's not really another good place in that policy to put that language, that's why it's there. But Naomi wanted to make one comment on, just, we can still pass it, it's just one little thing.
What happened was a bunch of edits had been made based on our discussion at the last meeting, and then And then the edit Lori is talking about got put in. And so there's a couple of lines that are redundant, um, because, because just the, the edits haven't, happened at different times. So we, Lori and I agree that we would like to pass it, um, uh, sort of as written, but with the removal of lines 122, 124 and 125. So it's just, literally it's just removing redundancies, um, because it already says those things up and above in the, in the other paragraph.
But the numeral six needs to go above at the beginning of, I school will designate a co-regulator.
Oh, okay. Yes. So remove lines 122, 124, 125, and bullet six is now going to start at line 111.
I'll ask our policy gurus this question. Is it too late to add one sentence that I think isn't shocking?
No, I think it's not too late.
Um, I had, I think I had emailed and at this point it's been so long that I don't remember who or when or what. But I, I had, um, emailed and asked that maybe, um, we start this whole policy at the suggestion of actually a community member who emailed me and said, this is really good, but I think maybe you need to start with a statement that, um, and this was the suggested statement, the Merrimack School District affirms the right of all children to be treated with dignity, period. And then literally everything else, right? Like adding that as the first sentence in, in, in the idea that that is the overarching basis for which this entire document rests upon. We affirm the right of all treated children to be treated with dignity, which I think sums up the whole thing in one sentence. And then it can literally go on for, it's just the addition of that one sentence at the very beginning. I thought it was a great suggestion and it, it sort of sets the tone for everything else you read. Just my, and I, I thought it was an excellent way to start. If anybody disagrees, I, you know, I'm not going to die on the hill, but.
I absolutely agree with that. My legal brain goes though, when we start declaring a right, do we need to clear it with the attorney before we put it in there?
I think so.
I'm sorry. I hate to be like. If we can pass it, I'm just saying, I think.
Jenna, I, I really like that statement too. We spent a lot of time on this policy, a lot of time. So to change a really strong statement in the beginning, I think is a really good recommendation. I just think we put this one back to the lawyer.
Well, we'll be glad to check that. Uh, personally, I, I don't think it represents a material change to the detriment of the policy. And I think it's a very nice addition, but we will get the legal opinion on that.
I didn't mean hold that up.
I, I did email and then when I read this, I didn't catch that it wasn't there. Sorry.
But I would be willing, like, Bill, if it, if it's agreeable to you,
Sure.
to this be the one non-budget thing we put on the agenda next week? So we could pass it next week.
That's fine.
Once you get that, that opinion and then we can finally be done with this. But I, I do want to say, I, first of all, I agree with you and it's so important. I read just this week alone, three districts in our nation that are in trouble because either they did not have a good policy or they did not follow that policy. And that's why this one is so, so important.
And you know what? I really love that this community member was paying enough attention to actually read it. And they have a career and a background in special ed and really felt like what we were trying to do really rests on that one sentence. And I thought it really meant a lot. And so I thought I would bring it forward. And I, I never followed up after I emailed and it was, I feel like a hundred years ago now, but.
Yeah, it just came, it just came back because we really have spent so much time, which I think that's what we're supposed to do. And I really appreciate that we do spend so much time. So I have no problem with that either. I think that this one goes on hold. So the rest of them. Yes. So the rest of them, do we want to do individual or just do the policies? How do you want to, um, what is the will of the board on the motion of the rest of the policies?
Well, it's only the second reading, isn't it? Don't we, are we approving them tonight or are we approving them next time?
So sometimes we do second readings, we, we pass them. So that's kind of like we're, we're trying to move forward because we have so many. So if no one has real heartburn, um, we can move forward with the second review of the special ed evaluations. Does anyone want to discuss or make a motion?
I, I'll just say that in looking through them, I didn't have any, any deep issue with any of them.
Me neither. So do we want to just do it as a whole or do you want to go individual? That's what.
We should go individual.
Okay. So I need, I need a motion on the, um, special education evaluation.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we're going to move forward to the evaluation requirements for children with developmental delays. Uh, I H B D A. I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve policy I H B D A as presented and written.
Do I have a second? Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we're going to, uh, we waive the first reading on the, um, admission of, of tuition for non-residential students.
We've got one more that was on second reading.
Yeah, we're, but we're not voting on it. We just want to know if there's any more discussion on that.
On the first reading, no, but we need to go back to this other one.
Yeah, we have, I don't think you took action on, uh, I H B A B.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. So we need to.
So I'd be happy to make a motion that we, um, accept the second review or the, uh, special education evaluations, I H B A B as written.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Going out of order does not help.
Yes.
Okay.
May, may I ask, um, Naomi, I think you're still the school board representative for the policy supplement, right? Or both you and Lori?
Lori and I are.
Okay. Could you send those, uh, revisions on restraint and seclusion to Sandy as soon as possible? So that we can get this right back and recycle it for next week for you?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. You all set? Okay. Great. Now we're moving forward to approval of the minutes for November 6th, 2023, public and non-public.
I move that we accept the minutes, public and non-public from November 6th, 2023.
I'll second.
Oh, yeah. Nope. Never mind. I wasn't there.
Yes.
I was not there.
I was there. I'll second.
I just have one correction, um, as far as the, um, planning and building committee. They did not, uh, name the school board, um, member as a member of the committee. So if that just could be added, that would be great. Okay. So we have a motion to accept with the, just adding the school board member. All those in favor?
Could you just say where that addition is? What line minutes? What line?
Of course, like I have to find it because I read it like a week ago, so. It was under Rich Hendrix. So he named the, under, uh, so it'd be page three of eight. Under old business, Rich Hendrix. Can you see it? So on page three, here it is. Right here. There we go. I see it. Okay, we got it. Okay. So now we just need a vote. I can't.
Okay. So I move that we accept the minutes as amended for November, let me back up. I withdraw my initial motion. I make a new motion that we accept the November 6th, public and non-public minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Say aye.
Three, zero, one.
abstain.
Abstain.
And one abstain.
Okay. Now we're moving on to the consent agenda.
The first order of business at the last meeting on November 6th, you received, uh, Kimberly Morgan's resignation from the middle school. But you, um, there wasn't a vote on it. So if you could just take a minute to, uh, vote to accept her resignation.
I would be happy to make a motion to ex, is it just that or is it everything on the consent?
So do you want us to do just that?
Yes, that'd be great. So I, um, make a motion that we accept that, uh, her resignation, Kimberly Morgan's resignation.
Second. All those in favor? Or zero, zero.
And now you have three role descriptions in your packet. I just wanted to bring your attention that one of them was not, it, it's the updated one at your seat, uh, for the assistant principal role, um, which reflects your feedback that the minimum of five years working as a certified educator rather than three. So you've got the high school role, this principal role description, um, just a, just the regular principal role description. And then the assistant principal role description, uh, for acceptance tonight.
So discussion.
Oh, I was going to say I move that we, uh, accept the consent agenda as presented.
Oh, yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We didn't vote. That's why we're just, okay, we're catching up. All right. Now we're at the, um, role of the principal. I, I have, yes, I, go ahead.
We voted on all of them at once.
I had one change on the principal though. I just had a question. So when it says supervises, it didn't say the director of guidance. I didn't know, does the principal, um, evaluate and supervise the director of guidance?
Yes.
Okay. So, so can that be added?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all. Sorry. So we need to re-vote on that. So I make a motion that we re-accept the high school principal role description with the addition of oversight over the director of guidance. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Committee reports.
I have one. Um, I went to the CIA committee meeting on November 21st, which feels like it was a year ago now, but it was really just not even a month ago. Um, they, we had a discussion about read, write Google, which has been an ongoing conversation in the, um, in that committee. Just about, um, you know how the benefits that it has for students in our district, but also who it really benefits in the cost benefit analysis essentially is what the ongoing conversation is. And, um, we haven't come to the end of that conversation yet, but we will, we will. And it's a very thoughtful conversation and, and it's very, um, it's very meaningful. Um, we also had a presenter from our director of student wellness, Sarah Prado, actually. Is that her title? Okay. That was her title and where I worked with her. So I was afraid maybe I said the wrong title. Um, Sarah Prado, and she presented a, to us about, uh, SEL curriculum being used at the middle school, uh, wayfinder in the high school. In the high school wayfinder, um, and it was a really great presentation and actually extremely impressive. I was very impressed, um, with what, what I saw. And then there was a discussion about algebra one and how algebra one will be presented in the high school and how, um, it, it just how it's basically foundational algebra one and how they're going to address some situation, some, uh, concerns they had with the way it was running. And, um, they're going to do it in a part one and part two found, uh, format. I couldn't even begin really probably to explain it fully to you. However, it was a very, again, very meaningful and, um, it's a great committee. They're very thoughtful about the things that are happening, um, across the district. And, and those were the three big things we talked about that night.
Thank you, Jenna. Anyone else? Naomi?
I had a bunch. Um, I went to a budget committee meeting, um, on November 14th, um, where we, they had a review of, uh, how the budget went last year from Matt and the first quarter of this year. And, um, the one kind of noteworthy thing that I felt like I did at that meeting was I, Matt brought up the SAU building and, and I brought up that the school board was completely behind this project and, um, asked that they also consider supporting this project. And they were reluctant to commit to anything that didn't have numbers behind it. But then they, after some discussion, decided that they supported the, the, the need. And so they were willing to have the conversation. Um, so the budget committee, uh, hopefully will be on board for reaching out to the community about the need. Um, when that comes time to present that. And then I went to a bunch of the strategic planning committee meetings, um, and that one's fun. Um, there's a lot of great, like they're, we're doing, they're doing like really kind of, they took the goals that we made last June. And then the administration kind of developed a little more over the summer and they're, they're kind of like going even beyond that and, and thinking really like big what-if questions. And I guess the eventual process is going to take those what-if questions again and bring them on right back in. Um, but it, there's been some really, really thoughtful, interesting discussions on that committee. So I'm excited to be part of it.
Thank you. And then, um, Matt alluded to this, but we did have a planning and building committee meeting. And, uh, they, um, created a PowerPoint presentation that they are still working on, that they are going to rule out to the public. Their next meeting is December 20th. So I have a question. It's not about a committee report, but it's about the email from last week. Have we resolved who will be on the title board stakeholder group committee?
That's me.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you have a private school leader on there? We have reached out. Well, there is one private school in Merrimack. They do not res, they do not elect to receive any funds. They don't have to be on the committee. But, um, you know, I, I do consult with, with his, his name is Ken Amador. He runs, uh. I know who he is. Oh, okay.
Okay. Next up is correspondent.
So I had some correspondents, um, a couple of them, they were concerned, um, parents. One was regarding a safety issue, which I, um, passed along to Bill and to Matt and Amy. And I believe that, that's rolling. And then, um, one that was about a teacher issue, which I also forwarded along. So both of those things are, I think, in the process of being resolved.
And I had a correspondence, just a question about the NHIAA and the importance of, uh, athletic directors following the NHIAA policies and how when schools don't, um, comply, which Merrimack does comply, how it affects the outcome of NHIA competitions.
And I had two people contact me questioning why and concerned why the SAU building ad hoc committee meeting was canceled. Because they just received the cancellation without explanation. And I passed that along.
Thank you very much. Okay. Comments? I just, I have one comment. So, uh, yesterday I was, um, fortunate enough to attend, um, an 80th birthday party for Dottie Zyle, who was a third grade teacher at Master Cola Elementary School. She was actually my teacher, but she was also Sue Kelly's teacher. And Sue Kelly gave a speech and, um, in her speech, Sue Kelly said, she's a 35-year teacher in the Conville School District. And she said her third grade teacher was the reason that she became a teacher. And I just think it's so important for our teachers or everyone in education, because sometimes we forget how important our influence is and how that influence is a wave. And it just goes on forever and ever and ever. So, uh, you know, just thank you for everyone in education. And, um, I just thought that was just such a nice, touching story. Okay. Public comments on agenda items. Seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.